Talk to me about the scope of services.
Absolutely. As you know, Dewberry did our last master plan update, oh eight, oh nine timeframe. And that master plan is what we use to manage the flow and the development. Because every time somebody brings a new development to town, we have additional flow into our sanitary sewer system. It's the master plan that allowed us to predict and to limit what was going on west of Spring Hill, because we knew we didn't have the flow. And we identified the need to relieve that line on Oakwood. It's time to update that plan again and to refocus on two sanitary sewer basins that we have, which are the ones that are running down four twelve here, one K, one J, which the previous plan said we should have seen some sort of flow impact, which we haven't. So what we're going to do is we're going to catch flow data in both dry and rainy season. They'll do the analysis on that flow data based on pipe type, pipe size, existing flows, and kind of give us a feel for how much additional capacity we have throughout those particular basins. And again, look a little bit further up on the two K basin, which is north of four twelve over by Cleveland, between Cleveland and Garland, I believe. And then they'll update our model, sanitary sewer model, and they'll give us a report. So what we're doing is we're resetting what we do those judgment calls and those measurements by back to truth data, or what we consider as close as we can get.
And we don't have anybody that can provide that information for us.
We have no means at this time to collect the data. The flow monitoring technology keeps progressing. So it would really be difficult for us to acquire equipment now and have it useful in ten, fifteen years, or nine to ten years when we need to do it again.
Is there a specified period of time that these updates are supposed to be valid?
I don't think there's really a specified time in ordinance or in regulation. But when you have the type of development that we have had in Enid, we know that we've got a set of basins that we should have reached capacity, and we're not seeing that. So we need to go check. That's one thing that we have to do. We know why we do it. And it's to keep us from getting a position where we have more flow than we have capacity, and it ends up out of the pipes.
And when will this update be completed?
This will be completed within twelve months.
Next summer. We should know.
Yes. The challenging part, of course, is we need flow data with rain, which we may or may not have. So we may push it out to catch a rain event.
And how long do you think this update will last? When do you think we'll have to do it again?
We'll look at it in probably eight, nine, ten years. Depends on the amount of development that we have. If you bring in a lot of development, we'll have to do it again.
These basins, one J and was it K?
Mm-hmm.
One of those basins is the West Gareet retail shopping area, right, or in that area?
Those basins are actually in the older part of town along four twelve. But it was this model, this our master plan, the existing one that Dewberry did for us, that we used to say, we have a capacity restriction. We cannot allow further development unless you store and pump off peak.
Is this the same people that did it for us last time, or is this a different?
No, sir, this is not. This is a different group of folks.
Thank you.
Well, just quickly, too, you'd asked about April, too, which is the budget item. This was in last year's budget. We were prepared to bring it to you in June. And we had an issue working out the contract with the vendor. So that's why there's a budget item this time. We didn't spend the budget item for it last year. So you'll see the budget item in nine point one is the actual contract with Burns and McDonnell.
Got another year out of it.
There you go.
There you go.
Sir, we are risk adverse when it comes to sanitary sewer.
Is that your only question, Ron?
That was it. Thank you.
We'll move to item three, discuss proposed downtown art project.
Yeah, this project is a, obviously, this item is a follow-up to the last meeting we had. We wanted to discuss it again and give the commission opportunity to discuss it amongst themselves. And as needed, Rami, the artist, is here, and Adam, the architect, is here as well. We do have a presentation. If you'd like to hear that now, or hear it in the regular session, we can do either. I thought we'd probably go through this presentation right now in the study session. And then probably in the regular, you could have discussion here, too. In the regular meeting, you could have more discussion. I'm sure there'll be people from the public that will want to discuss it with you as well. So let's go ahead and go through the presentation. And Adam, I'll just do the first part, because I think that was about the comp plan. And Dana, if you'll flip the slides for me. And I'd already shared this information with you. As you recall, we approved this comp plan back in about 2015. And the comp plan, the comprehensive plan, we called Enid Division, had six big ideas. These ideas were derived through a group with stakeholders in the community, as well as commissioners. And over time, this is what was adopted. Well, one of them was the big idea of focusing on our downtown area, called Enhanced Downtown. And so we just highlighted it there. The civic spine is an idea, I mean, it's a term right out of the comp plan. So we're probably going to start using that term. That green space in that area from Gareet to Main Street, or Washington, or not Washington, whatever it's showing there, all the way to Maple is really considered the civic spine of the downtown area. And it's interesting, when we went back and looked at that, those pictures right there are exactly pictures taken directly from the comprehensive plan. Now, the art project picture is not there exactly, but you can see some of those projects look very similar to the project that you're getting ready to see on the next slide. Was there one more slide with, maybe not, okay?
It comes later.
It comes later? Okay. Well, anyway, you've seen pictures, and you're going to see more pictures of the artwork. And so I just wanted to make sure, and I think you guys are all aware, that it is, it's your decision what happens, and whether you believe that's what we should use that property for. But I want you to know that if you do decide that it is a good use of the property, the comprehensive plan supports that. In fact, it actually encourages that. And so, Rami and Adam, would you like to speak to the rest of the slides?
Hi. Good to see you all again.
Can you go back one slide, please, Dana?
If you pop back one slide. So.
Do you have the clicker up there?
I don't.
Oh, this thing.
Here we go. I just, we just kind of listed, I mean, this is pretty self-explanatory. This is just sort of the idea of putting art in downtown, what it's doing, and how it meets some of the goals that were laid out. You know, we got interested in the Enid Comprehensive Plan, which is a big part of why this green space is going to exist anyway. So looking at that and comparing it to our project, I think we find that there's lots of advantages. We are matching up to what you guys are looking for in Enid and in downtown and in that green space. This is an image, this is pulled straight from the document that was provided. View looking, I think it's Gareet and Grand, looking towards the convention center. And you can see the large piece of public art framed there. It's not the gateway, it's public art. And essentially, I mean, we're kind of in the same spot. The buildings haven't been removed yet. But there's not too much difference. It's a different piece of art, that's for sure. But certainly supported by the documents you have. And eventually, I think you would like to create this series of amenities, of places here. I've been told the Park Avenue would be removed eventually in that one small section.
I don't believe it's, oh, Park Avenue.
Park.
I thought you were talking about Paul and Night and Gale to be.
Right. We won't take, we'll leave the thrift.
You don't want to hear what I heard. No, 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 no.
No, just the street, I think, is going to go away, I think, as part of the plan, to create the large green space. But, and as we discussed with some of the councilors as well, green space is really a lot more fun if there's things to do in it. And so we'd like to help out and kind of kick that off. You know, we played around with the idea of, well, is this in the right spot, right? We didn't just sort of plop it down in the field. Some of that was thinking about how this might develop over time. If our piece, which we've said several times, is a ten-year lifespan, maybe it could be removed, right? Or, I believe, it's a much longer than ten-year lifespan. I think it could last much longer than that.
There have been a lot of questions there. The ten years is a minimum, correct?
Yeah, that's a minimum. That's just sort of.
It can be extended and expanded as long as anyone would like.
There you go. Exactly.
While we're talking about that particular item, is, do we sign some sort of an agreement to keep it there for ten years? Or is it going to future commission take it out of here two years from now?
It would actually be, it would have to be, if city funds were used on it, it would have to be dedicated to the city of Enid. And then the commission, whether it would be two years, ten years, twenty years down the road, could decide to move it somewhere else, remove it, what have you.
I mean, but there's no specified period of time that.
No, there's not.
He's remained that location.
Well, I think the intent, I mean, based on what you tell us, Andrea will draw up the contract that we will sign. But we'll want to have something in there that if the commission wants to have the flexibility to remove it after ten years, we want everybody to understand that we could do that if we needed to. I think we'd capture that in the legal agreement.
Absolutely. There's just nothing in ordinance that sets a specific time for the art. It's up to the commission.
So are we purchasing this art, then?
You're not purchasing the art. You're making a contribution to, if you choose to accept the project, you would be making a contribution toward the construction of that art and toward the.
How do you differentiate between putting money towards something and then getting it and purchasing it? I'm trying to figure out the distinction between the two situations.
Well, if the city of Enid purchased it, we wouldn't have other partners. And that's the way I look at it. Is if you're purchasing art, you wouldn't have other partners. So you wouldn't have the donors that have already donated money for the artwork and things like that. But the ordinance requires if any city dollars are used on it through the Public Arts Commission of Enid, that that piece of art must be donated to the city of Enid once it's done. So the city does have the option of purchasing its own art, you know, doing RFPs and finding an artist to do that if the commission wanted to. But that's not the case here. The case here is just there's an artist and an architect that are looking for the city to fund a portion of the art.
Well, Andrea, isn't it correct that any structure placed on city property becomes city property?
Not in all cases, but for this art ordinance, yes, that is the case.
But what case would it not be?
Well, there are rare occasions where we allow a group to place something on the city's property, sometimes in parks and things like that.
Even structures?
Right, yeah. I mean, EJRT, I think, has a few small buildings. And the soccer group has, I think, a small building out at the soccer complex. So there are some, a few occasions. It doesn't happen very often. And we have the Kiwanis out at whatever.
Meadow Lake.
Meadow Lake, yeah, too, that they have their own structures on the city's property.
That train depot doesn't belong to the city?
I believe the train depot belongs to the city. The train itself belongs to the Kiwanis. Andrea is referring to probably the Ferris wheel may be an example. The city actually built the concrete there, but the Kiwanis with some donors, like the Champlains, paid for the Ferris wheel.
So by the city taking ownership of it, does that make the city obligated to maintain it?
It does, yes.
Other expense?
Yes. But the way the arts ordinance is written is a portion of the dollars funded by the city and by private donors would be set aside for maintenance. And in this case, the minimum lifespan is intended to be for approximately ten years. What would be if it will cost us to maintain it for ten years? And that money should be set aside for the maintenance. The intent of the ordinance is to cover maintenance in advance so that the city doesn't, you know, have an unfunded expense later on.
So in case of an expense, it may come to a point where the expense could be greater than any type of money that could be brought in as funding and revenue towards the city.
Well, but Derwin, that's.
Or in benefit of the city, possibly.
But that's a risk we run with literally everything we own. I mean, that's a risk with the playground structure we installed at Government Springs. It's a risk with the trail we installed. I mean, we put forth money, we maintain stuff, and there's always some inchoate risk of potential liability.
Wouldn't that also apply to the statues that we have downtown, in the downtown area and around Enid? Be the same thing.
Most of those are county, so.
So.
I mean, it is conceivable that, you know, especially at the age that, you know, something may cost more to maintain than it, you know, than it retains in value. I mean, that's kind of the case with anything.
So is that that $200,000 number that keeps coming up, what is the maintenance cost that we're projecting over the course of the next ten years for?
I don't know what maintenance costs you have projected. What is that?
I don't have any.
Oh. Okay.
Adam, I think he's referring to the total cost of the project. Were you saying like, you guys were saying the total cost of the project is about $300,000, $200,000 of his in-kind?
A lot of numbers have been thrown around. I think if I were bidding the project as a contractor, I'd come in around the 400 range on this, just to get it built. Maintenance-wise, in the next decade, I see very little on this project. If anything, it gets, you know, honestly, I don't see what you would do to maintain it. It's going to be a well-crafted steel structure. If you look around Enid, there's plenty of well-crafted steel structures available that don't need maintained on a daily basis. I think it's $3,000 from the 30 that we're requesting that gets set aside for maintenance. If anything, that covers a new paint job in five years. If, then that's it. That's the only thing I could think of.
There's one thing, there's one thing that came up last week when we were speaking about the possibility of something like trash blowing onto it and getting caught, which is, you know, as real as it is for any tree, you know? I mean, that, like, we can't prevent litter, we do our best, we hope that plastic bags don't fly around. It's possible a plastic bag might get caught and that it's there long enough that someone says, please go remove this. That could be the kind of maintenance we're looking at. It's possible that once a year, it needs to go and get mowed down. The prairie, it may need a fresh reset at the beginning of spring. You already mow this land, at least biweekly. It's very well-maintained as a plot of Bermuda. So there could be those kinds of expenses that are relatively minimal and don't exceed what the city is already doing in terms of keeping things clean. You know, I mean, the idea that the trash could catch on there in a breeze, that could happen on any of your existing sculptures. So it's not excessive.
It's hard for me to imagine that any kind of maintenance cost would supersede the value of the piece at any point in the future. So I just, I don't see how that is possible.
Well, and I would just say that normal routine, if we had to mow it or things like that, we already have dedicated people working in the downtown area. I don't see that necessarily as a burden. As long as, as you've pointed out, as long as there's not significant things that the city would have to do to keep it up. And we've already discussed many times, needs to be low maintenance.
Right.
Low maintenance, and nothing's really no maintenance, so.
But we've done our best to ensure the lights will remain for the duration that.
Rami, pull the mic over in front of you, please.
Yeah. We've done our best to ensure that the lights will be low maintenance, so that that won't be an obligation that the city has to fulfill. They are shatterproof, lifetime warranty LED lights that, you know, are the top of the line in terms of durability and longevity. We're using steel very intentionally and working with structural engineers and with professional fabricators to make sure that those are things that will pass everything and get permitted through the proper city channels. And we're really, we're doing our best to try and make this as up-to-code and safe and long-term as it can possibly be.
Since you mentioned the lights, I had some folks ask some questions about those. That was a really good idea. For every person who purchased or donated, they're going to get a light that goes along with it? Now, is there going to be like a star map or whatever that they can go in there and then I can, they can identify where their particular light is inside?
Yeah, that's exactly the plan. Once we have the stars lined out in the universe, we'll create a star chart, just like you would get if you purchased a star from, you know, the International Star Registry. And you get a map, and then you can go out and identify. You won't need a telescope to do it, which is nice. Everybody who donates at that level gets a star map so that they'll have that sense of ownership.
One question that, of all the questions I've asked, I never come up with this one. But explain the title of this structure to me. You know, I know it's titled. I don't think I've ever heard an explanation myself.
So as a part of the arc of the story of how we've come to this title and the concept behind it, it's very much based in the relationship one has with a parent or a figurehead within their life who is the one who explains to them what the universe is about. And the universe isn't, it's a metaphor for life. I mean, it's not necessarily someone who tells you how the stars work in the sky, but how you explore your surroundings and you become a citizen within society, if you can follow me so far. So my mom was that person for me. My mom is the one who enabled me to believe that possibilities are unlimited. My mom is the one who said, when so many people said, you're never going to make it as an artist, she was the one who said, you're making it as an artist and you keep going. She's the one who believed in me more than anyone, and she's the one who helped me be a competent, responsible human being on the planet. So when I think about the legacy of that and that relationship, and that I'm not alone in that relationship, most people have someone in their life that that person exists and helped them see the world, the worldview and how they fit within it. The idea that I'm creating something, I've thought of something that encapsulates the idea of a wing that protects its little baby birds, and that under that wing is the universe. I mean, it's a metaphor for parenthood or guardianship or friendship or marriage in so many ways. But it definitely, it rings true to relationship. And so under her wing was the universe. Under my mom's wing was the universe. Under someone else's wing was the universe for you. And that's true for everybody here in this room tonight, I hope. Like, it makes me sad to think that there would be people who didn't have that relationship with someone. But for me, that's what it was. So that's where the title comes from.
Is this going to be identified as a memorial to your mother?
No. My mom would be horrified by that.
She would be what?
Horrified by that. My mom would be horrified by this entire discussion. Because she wouldn't want this much attention made about her. I mean, for me, it's inspired by that, but this is not a memorial to my mom. Otherwise, it'd be called the Nancy Martin Pavilion.
I think it's important to remember that Rami came to me with a concept in mind, and she told this story about her mother. But I didn't agree to make a memorial to her mother. I connected to the concept, to the idea that she just told you, that there's a mentor, that there's somebody who can teach us about life. And, you know, we worked through this idea, and we came up with this. There were many titles. All of them came across. There were some, there were worse titles. There were some fun titles. But this is the title. This is the one that actually resonated. And strangely, it kind of says exactly what it is.
Yeah. I mean, it's, yeah.
What else?
As far as the sidewalks?
Yeah.
Could you tell us what the sidewalks are going to be made out of and how they're going to be constructed?
Sure. That's a decomposed granite with a stabilizer in place. So if you've ever, I don't know if any place in town has decomposed granite. It's a very fine crushed granite rock. The stabilizer goes on. It's a pervious surface, so water will just kind of flow right through it. But it'll stay sturdy and solid with that stabilizer, so.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
Are there any type of borders?
Yeah, there's edging along both sides.
I know what it is.
Yeah. You'd have to put up edging along both sides. We're looking at a plastic product right now.
We defer all sidewalk discussion to.
There you go. Right on. We thought about concrete. Honestly, we started with concrete. It would be a wonderful path, but, sorry, the concrete path running through a prairie threw us off a little bit, just in terms of concept. Something a little more natural felt right. I just can't help it. Something a little more natural felt right. And so the decomposed granite is what we're hoping for.
Is this what they have in Myriad Gardens?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, I'm trying to figure it out. Myriad Gardens has these paths all through it with the same.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with that product or structure, but I'm thinking of like disabled folks that have 500-pound wheelchairs. It's still going to maintain that weight?
Yeah, it's ADA compliant, so.
I'm more concerned about the potential for washout. No concern as far as washout with the high flow of water coming in that area?
If you don't put the stabilizer on it, it will wash away. I've used it on, I don't know, 15 projects so far, parking lots, sidewalks, walkways. It's fine with the stabilizer. If no stabilizer, you won't have decomposed granite very long. It'll wash away.
Derwin, did you have another question?
No, sir.
I was just going to say, George, that the paths at Myriad Gardens, my wife and I have gone through with her wheelchair or walker.
Okay.
It's no problem getting around on it.
Yeah, all right.
And I would add to that, that within my own life, there are two people who I love very dearly who are in wheelchairs. And I promise you, neither one of them would ever allow me to do something like this that didn't, that they couldn't enjoy. That's very much on my mind.
I was just thinking about the, some of the folks I know at Four Kids that have motorized wheelchairs that are much heavier than just a normal wheelchair.
Yeah.
So they can get quite heavy.
Yeah, totally in line with that and agreed. We also are taking extra care to kind of widen the path as it gets inside, providing some seating so that people can go by. And, you know, there's ample room to stop and enjoy the peace.
Adam, explain a stabilizer on crushed rock.
Okay, so it's a, it comes, it's a liquid form, comes in a gallon jug, and you mix it with a bigger bunch of water and pour it over the top of this and let it dry. It's really just like resin. Are you familiar with resin materials? So if you poured resin on anything, it gets harder. It's kind of like that, except the stabilizer still allows, it's a natural substance, and so it still allows water to flow through it. So one of the things I try to do on every project, and I think it's really important on this project, is the water, how water gets back into the ground, runoff, that kind of thing. And so I think what we'll have is zero runoff site. We'll shoot for that, anyway.
And Adam, I did have a concern. I thought about, you know, you all not putting concrete on there. Like, if there's ice.
Yeah.
You can remove it with this. It's going to be pretty difficult.
Yeah.
To remove that with ice.
That's true.
On the surface.
Yeah. It's something to think about. I'm not too concerned with it. Like, I haven't seen that really happen on projects yet. But it's something to think about. I agree.
I think if there's, if we have a big ice storm, probably not going to be that many people down there, anyway.
It's going to be on everything.
That's usually the case with ice, but.
Actually, a shortened duration when we do have those kind of issues, I think.
Except that one year.
I know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ninety-three was one of them.
Oh, two was the one I remember.
Yeah.
One of the benefits of it, see, ice will form on top of concrete because water sits on top of it. If water's not sitting on this and it's running through it, the ice won't really form on it, and it'll dissipate, hopefully. If we get a foot of ice, then I'd advise you to stay home, anyway.
Talk to us a little bit. Talk to us a little bit. You folks had a very successful fundraiser on Thursday. You might give us the update on the private dollars because this is a, a public-private partnership. We like those. We like not having to pay for everything. Tell us a little bit about how your fundraiser went Thursday evening.
Great.
Oh, hey, I can do that. We had a fundraiser last Thursday at Garcia's, which I love because they have that delicious salsa bar. And our goal was to raise $5,000. That was then going to be matched by Park Avenue Thrift and by John Martin. At the end of the fundraiser, I was kind of loosely trying to tabulate just roughly what we had raised and I was like, well, we got to $3,900, which is, which is pretty awesome, you know? Like, feeling pretty proud, kind of wish we'd made it to five. But then when we got back to the hotel and I started doing math from the GoFundMe pledges and from the people who had emailed me and sent me Facebook messages, we raised over $20,000 Thursday night. And then Park Avenue gave five and then John Martin gave five. So, we left Thursday night with an additional $30,000. And then since then, we've raised another three.
Resounding endorsement.
So, what's the total up to then?
I think we're at thirty, sixty-three, four, fourteen, last time I looked. When I look at that fourteen, I'm just like, why? Six, six more dollars. I could have round numbers with it, but, you know.
That's an excellent number. Out of curiosity, do you know if, any Enid-based organizations that are affiliated with the city that have contributed to that amount?
For example, I'm sorry?
Main Street?
Yes, Main Street, yes. Main Street has donated, the Enid Arts Council, which is a separate entity from the Public Art Commission, has donated. Several businesses have donated, yeah.
I'm more, I was more concerned looking at as far as what the, the overall, as far as what the city was putting towards this, being that, you know, city affiliated. Not to take away from you, because that's a very, very, I did a fundraiser not two months ago and we didn't get close to what y'all came up with. So, I know it's a, it's a huge undertaking in order to be able to do what you raised. So, not to take away from that, but I'm really just trying to figure out what the city's investment is at this.
Yeah, the Main Street portion was, I believe, $1,000 from the Main Street General Fund, but that was matched by Main Street board members contributing their own money. Main Street does receive city money. Main Street also received, we have a history maker, I'm on that board directly. We have a history maker program where people contribute a pretty significant amount and there's, there are, there's other revenue stream coming into Main Street. But, but about, I think, half of that was private board members kicking in to, to help see it happen. So, it's a both a small dollar that came from the Main Street General Fund.
Sure. Do you know of any, any others where, where they're?
No, I know the, the Arts Council, we don't receive, I'm on that board also. We don't receive any money from the City of Enid. I don't, I looked at your GoFundMe page. I didn't see any other organizations with any City of Enid affiliation, maybe some City of Enid employees, but otherwise, yeah. No, 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 nothing.
CDSA receives some funding.
CDSA does, you're right.
CDSA.
The Peanut Gallery is not allowed to talk, but the, but my dad is right. The, CDSA does receive some funds specifically for a specific program through CDBG, but, but none of that money, they couldn't have used that money for this if they wanted to.
Gotcha.
And then there is one other institution that's in the state, the Oklahoma Visual Arts Coalition. They gave us a grant for $1,200, which is the maximum allowable grant for an individual artist through their Community Artist Partnership Program. So, that was really, that's a nice endorsement. They're a statewide agency that supports individual artists.
Excellent.
And I'll tell you, like, we did, we, we have exhausted every potential grant-seeking opportunity that is available to individual artists. Of course, nonprofits have an advantage in being able to apply for grants because of their 501(c)(3) status. As individuals, a fundraiser of this level is really unheard of. I mean, it's not only unheard of in Oklahoma, it's unheard of nationwide. There just aren't many artists who do this. And so, I don't mean to be braggadocious, but like, I'm really impressed with us because it's kind of a big deal to have raised that much money as individuals for a project that's in a city that most people don't live in, you know?
Any other questions, comments?
Do you, do you have any type of breakdown of where a majority of your donations came from or the different demographics?
Yeah, I think it's updated since I last did the, the survey of it. But of course, I am keeping a pretty immaculate spreadsheet of all of our donors. The last time I looked, I can't break it down by percentage, but I can get close with numbers.
Sure.
Eighty-two of the donors were from Oklahoma City, about 68 were from Enid. There were nine from Tulsa, nine from Norman, Stillwater represents well, Edmund, Guthrie. And then there are one or two that are from, like, there's one from Ringwood, there's one from Owasso, there's one, you know, like Ada Woodward. And then I think there were, if I remember correctly, I think there are about 18 that come from out of the state. And, I mean, I'm not, I'm not embarrassed to say, those are people who lived in Enid. Those are, those are people who left Enid and saw this and said, "Yeah, this sounds great. I'd love to see it."
Have you had corporate donors yet or any folks helping or wanting to?
You know, our corporate donations are coming in in-kind, to be honest. And so, those partnerships, like Bruggeman has been really gracious in providing us with some in-kind support. EnviroTech is also supporting us with in-kind support. We have two meetings tomorrow to talk with some people about donating some more stuff. So, we've definitely have received corporate donations, but they're not cash. They're subsidizing our materials costs and donating things for us, which is amazing.
Fantastic.
Because the bulk of our expenses will be labor, hiring welders, hiring fabricators, hiring a painter, things along those lines.
If I could ask another question on, along the other, another line. The area in and of itself, insects, we, we're going to have a very, you know, field-like presence. And so, my, I'm curious as to what we're going to do in order to be able to mitigate insects in the area.
That is an excellent question.
Well, thank you.
So, among the things in, in trying to create an authentic prairie that is beautiful and that is low maintenance and that does everything aesthetically to kind of embrace that idea of what a prairie is and how that, how important that is to Oklahoma, there are certainly plants that you can put in place that help deter insects. There are plants that attract butterflies but repel mosquitoes. There are plants that attract bees but repel wasps. There are all sorts of plants in those. And we're working with landscape architects very closely to make sure that we're doing everything to benefit that. We do have a stretch goal that we set up about a month ago so that if we can exceed our designated allotment of $100,000 and get to 110, we propose to install a SWAT system. And if you're not familiar with that, that is an all-natural bug deterrent mosquito, flea, tick-repelling spray system that sprays three times a day with a crushed chrysanthemum. It's a very costly measure, however, as someone who in this room would attract all the mosquitoes, that's important to me. Like, I, in, in many ways, I, I pick things that are self-serving and that is like, I don't, I don't want to be swarmed by mosquitoes while I'm trying to enjoy art. How can we prevent that? I also don't want to get a sunburn. So, how can we prevent that? You know, like, these things are very much on our mind. Were you going to?
Yeah, I think the same amount of mosquitoes exist in any given location at any given time in the built environment. So, whether, whether there's a pocket prairie in one spot or not, it's going to be the same amount of bugs as Enid has, essentially. You can't differentiate just a zone where bugs are.
Well, you can.
Can you get an accumulation of water?
Meadow Lake has that big standing pool of water.
If we put standing water on the site, then you've got a problem. But I, I don't see that the prairie landscape is going to necessarily attract more bugs. It's just sort of the same amount of bugs.
Or at least no more than the grass that's there today.
Yeah, yeah.
While we're talking about the prairie landscape, how do you feel the prairie landscape contributes to this as a, as an art project?
Right.
Like I say, and I think I mentioned before that in all the years I've been involved with the city, if any, if anything, any property the city owns starts looking like a prairie, we get a lot of phone calls and, and they want something done about it.
Right.
Here, we're going in a different direction. I, I just, you know, when you, when you talk about something, the universe and everything, if my brother prairie comes into it, it's a, it's a little bit odd to me.
Well, part of the concept here is that, you know, light pollution plays a large role in why we don't see the stars at night anymore in, in larger cities and in Enid. One area that light pollution didn't exist is on the, on the prairie landscape, where the prairie naturally existed. You're also entering into a piece where you're being transported, right, to another place, to another universe, so to speak. The, the landscape here kind of plays into that whole idea. We wanted it to not just be the piece, but it's the surrounding, it's the surrounding area. This whole thing becomes a work of art. It's altogether one thing. So, that, does that kind of help?
I think it also helps with our maintenance, Ron, and that if it's done right, and assuming you have the right landscaping architects working with you, it, it should be done right. That assuming it's done right, it will require less maintenance than the status quo from the City of Enid and that we, we're not going to have a guy out there on a mower.
Right.
Twice a week in the middle of summer.
Yeah.
It can, it can go longer between tending.
And I would say probably the areas that you've seen overgrown that are, you know, you said the prairieed up here in town that the people complain about, that's, that's not really a prairie so much as that's just some weeds in the Bermuda that have grown up and they're not attractive. We're looking at planting actual native species here on this site, which aren't common around town, which you don't see. And so, it'll be, it'll be quite a different kind of landscape, recognizable prairie.
I'm not concerned about it the first year. It's, it's the second, the third, the fourth.
I think that it'll be the third and fourth year that it'll, it'll look really good by that point, really filled in.
If I could just add a tiny bit about just the universe and how the prairie fits into it, I think, I think any kid who's seen an animated movie like Bugs or Ants and understands that there, there are actually little micro-universes within the prairie that we don't experience because we're not bugs, there's some magic involved in that. And the fact that not only is the universe above us, but it's also below us. But also, even in thinking about how a prairie fits in and the idea of transporting to another place, which I completely concur with Adam on, I lost my train of thought. He'll come back to me. My apologies.
Hey, Commissioner, I would say one thing too about prairie and no-mow areas. This is a concept that, while it may be new to us, particularly in the downtown area, it is not new overall. If you'll, if you'll recall driving up and down Highway 81, you see signs the state has out that talks about it's a no-mow area and it talks about it's there for butterflies. And even at Vance Air Force Base, Colonel Cunningham, you could probably talk to us about things you guys are doing out there. I think you have some prairie-type areas.
Yeah, we, we do. It's really primarily for, for a funding issue where we don't have to spend as much money and to tend those parts of, of the base. So, yeah, there are definitely parts of Vance that we don't put the mowers out there and, and we let it.
But, but I have seen some pretty wildflowers, flowers out there too. So, I don't know if they were planted intentionally or they just accidentally came up as part of the prairie, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know if they were planted intentionally. I'm sorry.
Take credit.
Yeah, take credit. Yes, that was planted intentionally. It came to me what my thing was. And that is that, one of the things that I think is in place here with the, with a pocket prairie, which is not unique to Oklahoma, this happens all over the country. There are examples and there's all sorts of sites that are dedicated to embracing and restoring pocket prairies. But I think one of the ways that you mitigate complaint is through signage. And I think that we can really approach this very much in the same way that the Myriad Gardens has in Oklahoma City by providing signage and identifying plant species, not only by their name, but by their scientific name. And then also on our signage, which we plan on having prominent signage that explains the project, explains the concept, gives credit to all the sponsors, all of those things. That there is literal language that says, "This is a pocket prairie and this is what this means. And this is what the landscape looked like before white people came and manicured it."
We have to start teaching kids about water conservation. We have to start teaching them about land use. We have to do these things. Oklahoma's in dire straits when it comes to water and its use. This project is addressing that issue in a very direct way.
And how do you, how would you deter rodents from accumulating and being attracted to high grass like this? And, you know, you get varmints in there and the next thing you know, we got some snakes here and there and before you know it, it becomes a liability and a possibility of someone getting bitten. I'm just talking about the possibilities of reality.
Yeah.
Back that.
So, edging materials, understanding how the growth happens and what areas growth is going to be able to happen, controlling where that growth happens. And so, there's, there's going to be a series of planting exercises that take place where, you know, three different tiers of plants are being used and they're planted in an order system that brings them up higher as they get to a certain point and lower as they get to another point. At no place is this overgrown where I can't see what's in it, you know, a couple feet of grass at most. And in the middle of downtown Enid, I don't expect a whole bunch of varmints running around. There might be, you know, certainly cats. I've seen some of those running around down there. But as far as deterring them, just as much as you would any, any other place.
You have a good smell of food down there.
Yeah, that's true. You've got, you've got some food over there.
Well, and to that extent, I would say, how do, how does any of the restaurant dumpster deter rodents? I mean, you know, like, to some extent, we share this land with them. I'm not advocating that we have snakes and rats living in our prairie. But to the extent that snakes and rats live at Meadow Lake and they live at Government Springs Park and they live at the bird sanctuary and they live in people's backyards and we just, we manage it as we manage it. Enid doesn't have a rattlesnake problem, so thankfully, you know.
But if you figure out a perfect solution with the possums, would you let me know? They're the bane of my existence.
What I've always.
Possums are our friends, by the way. They eat ticks.
Down the street knows downtown too that have plants and they look beautiful right now, but they have to be maintained.
Right.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a very good asset for downtown.
We have signs up at Government Springs Lake. There's signs very clearly say, "Don't get in the water, there's snakes."
Don't feed the snake.
What I've found is that if, if there's lights and people and cars and noise, there's not a lot of animals around. And so, in the middle of downtown, I just feel like this little pocket prairie, it, it's not going to attract anything that'll become like a Enid snake problem kind of thing.
But if there is, then, then you just bring in the bigger birds and then you bring in the bigger cats and then you bring it, you know.
Do you give a mouse a cookie?
It only takes one snake.
And, and you know, I'm glad you said that because the point was brought up July the 6th about the birds, you know, it attracting the birds. And defecating on the art project, how will we maintain that and keep that clean and keep all the asses from the birds and everything from coming inside and messing things up?
I think that it was hard not to giggle a little bit just because, you know, birds, birds live in trees and you want trees downtown and there's, and, I mean, bird poop is just a part of that. However, I took that very consider, into great consideration and then went home and Googled how you deter birds. And the number one way to deter birds is to hang something silver and shiny. And we're creating a big silver shiny structure. And so, I think, I think we're, I think we're good. Like, literally, the, if you Google, "How do you deter birds?" It's like, put a fake owl up. We're not going to put a fake owl up or scarecrow. I don't know, maybe a scarecrow.
A scarecrow.
I've been asked that question, believe it or not.
Oh, no. Well, I think it was a big point of the discussion last time.
Have asked me that question, I've received more phone calls I've ever received in my life over this project. You know, I'm, I'm asking for the public.
You're welcome.
Not, not for nothing, Derwin, I, I don't think it's a real question in that I, I, it seems like such a strange hangup in that we have structures all over this town.
I have never had a client call.
We have playground structures, we have trees, we have park benches. And with the exception of a, like, half-block section of downtown that for some reason birds just left, with that one little exception, it hasn't been a problem anywhere. I mean, we get a good rainstorm and the playground structure next to my, my house, you know, I live next to a park and so, you know, take my kids down there, there's bird stuff. It rains, it's gone. I mean, it's not, it is a, it, it feels almost like a, a, I know. I mean, it's not, it is a, it feels almost like a, I know people kept bringing it up to me too, and every time I said, "What are you talking about?" I mean, there's nothing else in town that, we don't worry about the dugouts in the baseball field at Exchange Park being a haven for bird feces or the backstop at David Allen Ballpark being a haven for bird feces. And surely those, along with whatever playground structure, are just as likely as this. I really think we're going to be okay. And everybody at home who's watching this, all 34 of you, I promise this is, the birds are the smallest issue. It will not be-
And we are not planting Bradford pear trees in the prairie.
We are not planting those trees that were downtown on that like half-block section that the birds just love to death.
I think that's why people are stuck on this bird thing, because we did have a problem downtown for a little bit, but that problem was because of the specific type of tree. The trees are gone, we don't have a bird problem anymore. We're not putting those trees in the prairie, so I don't think we're going to have a bird problem.
You promised that, right?
I guess that is time will tell.
And that's true.
I hope this increases the enjoyment of birds in Enid. You know, songbirds are actually kind of, their days are numbered and there's people, there's a whole society out there that goes and looks at these birds and writes about them and draws pictures of them and it's an important thing to people. So, birds can be a beautiful thing in your environment as well, if anybody's listening.
I wouldn't do it anymore.
I'm good.
I've got one thing when you're finished.
I was just going to follow up with what Commissioner Wilson said. I mean, we will not have Bradford pear trees down there. That is, when I looked up, "How do you get rid of birds?", it said, "Don't have Bradford pears." And then Ben, just so you'll know, viewership of this meeting will far exceed 34.
I know, I'm sure you're right.
I just, I wanted to point out something too that I thought was kind of neat, because it kind of tells us a little bit about what the younger generation is thinking, because honestly, that's why I do this job, that's why I'm here, is because I want my kids to enjoy living in the town that I enjoy living in. That's truly one of my biggest goals of doing what I do and I think that's why most of us do this for, is because we want our families and the other families that are come up to enjoy living in the city. And so the other day, my daughter was asking me a bunch of questions about this because she's seen this stuff on Facebook, she's like, "What is the deal?". And so I was explaining it to her, what it was, and so she was asking me about the actual art project and I was telling her what it is, and the very first thing her head went to, she was like, "Oh, like a date spot, like where you can go..." And I was like, "Exactly, that's, and that's exactly where the kids", and she's 18, and that's, you know, that's where the kids' heads are going, is like, "This is going to be a great spot for us to hang out." And so to me, that speaks a lot because that, A, it's one thing that we all know in this town that our kids want, is a place to hang out, something to do. And that was immediately, when I was explaining this to her, that was exactly where her head went. So I thought that was kind of neat.
If I can tag onto it, Commissioner Wilson just said, there was a point probably in April in which Adam and I were talking about kind of the goals in my mind, having grown up here, for the idea of what this could be or what kind of emotional response I hope it elicits. And it certainly was. It was the first date or it was a wedding proposal or it's, you know, it's those truly unique moments. And I know every single person in this room has seen a romantic movie where, you know, the boy reaches in and kisses the girl and it's raining and it's in a beautiful backdrop. Like, in my wildest dreams, I see a movie being shot and this being a location. I want it to be a unique, specific, undeniably beautiful experience that elicits those kinds of moments where you can have teenage daydreaming. It's been one of the things that I've had from the outset. The idea that you would have a place that inspires you to think bigger than what you've ever experienced before.
Something too that I think is interesting that we haven't brought up, and I don't mean to put the attention on Kelly, but at Christmas time, we have a 53-foot tall tree of lights on our courthouse lawn. It's beautiful. And I've noticed over the last couple of years that we've had it, that it is a natural place where people sit. They like to sit under it for no other reason than because they like to sit under the canopy of lights. And I've done it, my kids have done it, I've seen people all over town gather to sit under that tree of lights. And to me, this is not any different, I mean, in that regard. And that is 53 feet tall, it doesn't obstruct any view of anything. We've never had any questions about birds or we've not gone through this lengthy process to whether we can have a tree of lights in our downtown at Christmas time. It's never been objected to, so I don't understand that on that level, but that's an example of something that is a little bit similar. And then we have a huge 53-foot tall canopy of lights every Christmas and people love it.
Light up the planes has been on my mind.
I can speak to that. One of the main detractors that I hear from folks is this, they don't want it. And so there are people who want baseball and so they don't mind sitting in a little bird poop when they go out to go play baseball. Christmas is an American tradition. It's a worldwide tradition that most people in the world, or at least most people in America, celebrate. So sitting around a Christmas tree is something that they do. This is something that is foreign to a lot of people that are here. And so the comparison's not in apples to apples, it's in apples to oranges. Not to say that this isn't something that could become that for the people of Enid, but my biggest conversation with people when I talk to about this is, when they ask me is, "What is my connection to this?". And I've heard, and I've heard the, you know, the mentorship under the wing, but from the people, the majority of the people that I've spoken to, they just don't connect with it, just to be honest.
I think that that's fair. And I think I said this last time, and if I didn't, I'm remiss that I didn't, and that is that we can't all like the same things and how boring would it be if we did? You know, like, it's okay to have a diversity of what we enjoy and what we don't like. I think, for me, whenever I think about the idea of the people who don't like it, they don't have to enjoy it, but when they decide that they do, they still can, I think that's pretty important to remember. I think about the piece called Cloud Gate that's in Chicago. It's well-known as The Bean. It's actually called Cloud Gate and it's by an artist named Anish Kapoor, who is a super rock star, kajillionaire, mega artist. That piece was not $100,000 budget, that was a multimillion-dollar project.
I'd say it was about $25 million.
And, 25, thank you. People don't have a connection to that. Like, nobody goes and says, "Oh yeah, beans mean a lot to me" or "Cloud Gates mean a lot to me", but they can still go and appreciate the aesthetic of it and they do. I mean, it's a huge draw for Chicago. Very few people visit Chicago without going to Cloud Gate because it's so unique and it's so identifiable. And I think that, I can name other examples of public art that do the same thing, that you don't necessarily have to have a personal connection with this piece of art to be able to enjoy the beauty of it.
Definitely. And I agree with you and I talk to people about that and I raise the same thing, and the difference in those situations is that The Bean privately funded, 100% privately funded. It was something that the city went out and sought out artists in order to be able to do that particular piece of art. And so that goes to a question I was going to ask later on in regards to our process in which we went through in order to be able to obtain you as an artist in this piece that came to this particular point, because there's a legitimate question from people out there as to, "Why this art? Why in this place? Why this particular artist?".
And, but real quick, I mean, John, in response to that first issue, people aren't going to like everything.
I agree.
But our job isn't, our job isn't to please everybody, our job is to do as much as we can.
Sure.
And this is something we can do. And people may not have a connection to it yet, but they will. I mean, this is in part being leaders. This is in part showing, this is a great opportunity that was dropped in our lap. This is a fantastic opportunity that won't come around again and you may not have a connection to it today. And I had this exact conversation with a gal who called me today and I said, "Listen, you may not have a connection yet, but you will." And in part, you know, our job is to grab an opportunity. The other part of it, to keep in mind, is that maybe that person never will. Maybe they will never be able to appreciate this. However, we have a lot of people, we have an enormous amount of people who will. And we have a normal amount of people who have, in this community, committed in that hard way. I mean, you've done fundraising, you know. They're not just saying, "Oh, this is neat." They're committing in this hard way, they're writing a check, and that's a big way. And so it's not just, "Should we do this? Is everyone going to be happy with it?". It's, "We have an opportunity that doesn't cost us much? Should we say to those people who believe in it and say to the artists who came to us with a vision and say to the state at large, because lots of people are watching, we don't want this in our community?".
Sure.
And so it's not just, "Should we seek this out?", because that's not what happened. We had somebody come to us with a vision.
Very much.
And it will, the repercussions if we push it away and say, "No, we don't welcome this in our community", extend past this one project.
Sure.
We have an opportunity and I don't want to let that get, I mean, I don't want to get hung up on birds and let that point slip by. We have an opportunity here.
It's kind of like saying, "I don't like heavy metal music, so nobody else gets to listen to heavy metal music." It's very much like that.
Not at all.
Because it's exactly like that, because-
You're not asking anybody else to pay for your heavy metal music.
But here's the thing.
Nor putting it in the town square.
Here's the thing, if we were having a partially city-funded festival that included a heavy metal band, I could argue the fact and say, "I don't want my money to go to pay for that",
Okay.
"But I wouldn't do that because I wouldn't begrudge somebody else the enjoyment of something just because I don't like it." Because that's just not how things should work.
This is the way that representative government does work. You work as a representative of the people and the constituents that you work for and if there is a populist that has an objection or doesn't necessarily agree with what's going forth, they have a voice, just like everybody else does.
Absolutely.
And it's not to silence their voice because you feel like that everybody should have a right to everything, but I think the voice in and of itself is the most important thing. So whether or not, you know, the voice of the folks who detract of it went out or the project goes forward, I think it's important that we legitimize every voice that's out there and not minimize it.
Commissioner Waddell, and to the governing body here, I ask and plead that we as a governing body, let's not allow this to fragment us in the future, no matter what our votes are tonight. Let's not allow this to fragment us as a governing body. We're here to do a job to represent them. So as representatives, let's not take this personal. Let's love one another in harmony regardless to the outcome. That's my request. To this board, embodied city manager, Mayor Shuey, I'm going to address you by your name, Commissioner Waddell, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Pinkin, Commissioner Ezell, and Commissioner Jansen.
Present.
That we do not allow foolishness to come up in here and we end up like it is up in DC. Let's work together in harmony, in peace, and in love, and if it doesn't pass, oh well, if it does, oh well. But moving forward, in the future, let's work together as a team. That's all I ask.
Well, there will always be things, there will always be four-three votes.
True.
And I assure you-
True.
I assure you, Derwin, it's been a lot worse here. This is great, we're good.
I'm new here.
Oh, you would love it a couple of years ago, man.
Ben, I'm going to say one thing, some concerns that I had, and we can extend this to the city council meeting at 6:30. Initially, and I wrote them down so I wouldn't forget them, when the Enid Arts Project was announced, I had some concerns that needed to be addressed. The concerns were, number one, location, number two, future maintenance, and number three, funding. These concerns have been addressed by the artist, the architect, and the Public Arts Commission to my satisfaction. It is an unusual structure and it has the potential to be an Enid landmark. These are my thoughts. The space cannot be used for retail as it is in the prairie. I can enjoy this project in the future and I will vote to approve the project. We have one more item we need to go to, but this item is on the city council agenda at 6:30 and we can continue at 6:30. We're going to go to item number five, discuss wayfinding signage. Lisa, is that you?
Yes.
We need to adjourn here at 6:15, if not 6:20 at the latest.
No problem.
You're on.
I can be as quick as you'd like me to be.
No. Give us the full load. We just got the art project. Signage is very important also.
So, thank you, Gerald, for asking me to come give an update to this board. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for having me. I was last here in January as we spoke of the wayfinding signage project and we appreciate your enthusiastic support of this effort over the past many years. I'll remind you, since we do have new members, a little bit of the background of how we have come to this point with new wayfinding signage. This is a project that was initiated out of the Enid First Team, which I know you hear that term quite a bit. That team is nothing more than the, oh, I've got a clicker, I'll show you. There we go. The Tourism Office here in Enid, Visit Enid, Enid Regional Development Alliance, which is your economic development office, the Enid Chamber of Commerce, the City of Enid, and Main Street Enid. This group has been meeting together since early 2010, really to coordinate our efforts to make sure we stay in touch with one another about activities of each of the organizations and to coordinate our marketing efforts. As the story goes, when we began each as an organization in 2009, marketing the community of Enid, we each had a very different take on what that marketing should look like, the pictures we use, the logos we use, the messages we sent, the things we marketed, and we looked like five different communities being marketed. And when we flipped through a magazine and saw that happening, we decided we needed to get on the same page and coordinate those efforts and our dollars would go further that way. So since then, that's where our new branding effort originated from and these organizations continue to meet together monthly to coordinate our efforts. And these are also the professionals who are involved in developing the community of Enid. It is our full-time job to do nothing but think about what is best for Enid in the way of growing the tax base, growing the citizens, growing the visitors, growing the businesses that locate here, increasing the economic prosperity of the Enid region. And we spend hours, each of us, as you do in your jobs, attending professional development and formal training across the nation on learning best practices for how to do that. And so wayfinding signage was one of those best practices that was identified by this group. And again, it really was identified back in 2010, but it's taken, you know, as things do, taken many years for us to get there. And so I wanted to review some of the reasons that the signage we think is important step for Enid. As I've mentioned, it's just a continuation of our branding effort. We started out identifying the personality of Enid and the three words you hear are "boundless, vibrant, and original". We identified a consistent mark for the community and that's the Enid symbol that you see that have been adopted in each of our logos. We have a very extensive photo and video library that we have developed as a part of this branding that can be found at enidbrand.com. And as you know, the entrance signs were the first step of the signage program. So, in addition to the branding, it really is also for our citizenry as, you know, first and foremost, it helps create a sense of pride in the community. It helps remind us of those things that we have in our community, that for those of us who've lived here a long time, it is easy to get complacent and remember some of the gems and opportunities we have here. And it creates, helps create a sense of place. And I've just listed what the definition of a sense of place is, because for those of us in economic development, that's a common term used, but it's those characteristics that make a place special or unique and foster a sense of authentic human attachment and belonging, not unlike the art project we've been talking about. But this signage can do that as well. And for visitors, it really helps to enhance the visitor experience. If you've been to a town that has wayfinding signage, it is so much simpler to navigate and you are continually being marketed to as you drive down the street and you realize, "Oh, I didn't know they had a symphony. Look at, there's a symphony if we turn down this road", you know. So, we are hoping that these signs will help derive additional traffic from both visitors and citizens to those venues and attractions that we have in Enid. Just as a reminder- Just as a reminder, here is the full sign type array, as it's called. Everybody has seen the new sign that's already been placed in Champlin Park, it's on the eastbound lanes of Highway 412. You will notice that there, well, I don't know where to start on this story here. So, one way to divide up a large area and help to provide direction is by lumping those areas into chunks or districts. We hired Corbin Design to help consult on this project, and they are one of the foremost signed, wayfinding signage consulting firms in the country. And so, Enid has been, therefore, divided into districts. A district is nothing more than just a recognizable area of town. The three districts that you will begin seeing as a part of this signage is the West Gharriet District, the Downtown District, and the Varsity District, which has already had much question since it did appear on the first sign. I will also mention that, apologize for the confusion of the Varsity District appearing on that first sign, because there is a system of installation for signage, because it is like a series of breadcrumbs to your destination, and one sign in and of itself is not necessarily helpful in that breadcrumb trail. So, as the other signs get placed, that Varsity District, no inclosure, will make more sense. But that is the university area for us. Varsity was a men's club at Phillips University, and so Northwestern, Oklahoma State University, and Northern Oklahoma College, as well as what's now referred to as Varsity Square, is within that Varsity District. And so, nowadays, when I refer to areas in that location of Enid, I usually refer to Jumbo's East, or to one of the colleges, or to Briggs Auditorium, which is not always helpful for people who are not from here. And so, as you break the city into districts, it helps for locations within those districts to provide directions to people who are not from here, because you can say, "We are located in the Varsity District, please follow those signs, you know, in our wayfinding signage." It is not allowable for us to put private businesses on those signs, and so, we are not gonna be able to put, you know, specific retail shopping names on there, but those centers could say, "We're located in the Varsity District, we're located in the West Gharriet District," and that helps in general for them to follow the signage to those districts. And as I've already alluded to, this project, we think, is important for Enid in the sense that it is a continual piece of marketing out there on our main thoroughfares. We're a city that has two major highways, and people can buzz right through town and never pull off the road and see what's available in Enid. And I'm sure they do that all the time. Now, as they buzz through town, they will hopefully see that we do have a symphony, and we do have a theater, and we have a science and arts children's museum, and we have a railroad museum, and we have other shopping and dining areas that they may not otherwise be familiar with. I've listed on here that, you know, that will be beneficial to citizens, visitors, developers, retailers, investors, and others who are in town for other business, and will accidentally learn a lot about things that Enid has to offer that they might not otherwise have known. A part of this project is also to declutter our roadways and remove a lot of the existing signage that has been either outdated or is duplicative. It's a fancy word. Here's an example of some of those signs. The top left, that is for the Northern Oklahoma Resource Center, as well as the one below that. In the middle there, you have the Historic Downtown Enid Sign. We visited with Main Street. Because these signs are faded, old, and the type is too small for the miles per hour of the speed limit along that roadway, they are impossible to read, and so, they're not doing the service that we'd like them to do if they were to remain in place anyway. And so, specifically in this case, we've talked to Main Street about, you know, removing those. I will mention, any sign that is removed will not be thrown away. We have plans to keep those, so that if anybody has any concerns, we've still got the signs. For some of the signs that may deserve display in some way, like this one that talks about the Historic Downtown Enid, we may arrange for a way to do that. And then, the sign on the far right has already been removed, and that is a duplicative sign that we now have the new wayfinding sign in place of that one there. We're working with Department of Transportation and the City of Enid to identify the best locations for each of the signs as they go up. I believe we have maybe a dozen that are ready to be installed now, and we will continue with additional phases. Good news is, is that we are significantly under budget for this project, because the fabrication has been done by city employees. So, that is a win-win, that we've been able to manufacture all those here in Enid and get those in place. And, let me see if I've forgotten anything.
Lisa, when will the first phase of signage be completed? When will you have up the first phase?
That might be a question for the city.
Yeah, that one's difficult to answer. I know we have the six large signs already built, so we will probably continue with the progress, like Lisa said, with the breadcrumbs, putting the next sign in place till we have the six big ones. And then, there's several that go downtown, identifying parking, I think there's a kiosk down there, as soon as we can. This is being done by our Technical Services Department, who is the same department that takes care of our traffic lights, does our street painting, and several other things. So, we are moving along as fast, it's our intention to get done. We could probably be done, I'm gonna jump out there and say, probably in the next two to three months, we should be done, if not sooner.
But I might...
Then we can start working on Phase Two.
But I might add that each phase that we roll out, we have attempted to make it a complete breadcrumb trail. And so, as Phase One gets in place, then it won't, you won't be left in a lurch when you see the Varsity sign, and then there's no anything additional to direct you to where Varsity District is. So, it may take a couple of months, but we will complete those trails, as those signs lead you through downtown initially, down Grand, I think is the first phase.
And NOC did their own huge wayfinding signage project in the last 18 months, maybe?
They did, yes.
It's made a huge difference, anything on campus is easier to find, it's made a big difference.
Yep.
Looks really good.
Completely independent of us, and, yes, it looks very nice, makes a big difference.
I spent the last two weekends in Tulsa for different events that were going on over there, and I noticed, this last weekend when I was there, that Tulsa has, they're divided in, I think, five districts. And the districts actually helped, because I'm horrible with directions and where things are, I actually navigated Tulsa pretty much by the districts that things were in, because I knew, I know where the Brady Arts District is now, I know where the Pearl District is, I know where the Blue Dome District is. And so, when there were things that we wanted to find, and it said, "Oh, it's in the Blue Dome District," I knew where to go. So, it really was very helpful in that regard. Obviously, we're not as big as that, but that was very helpful to me as a person from, not from there, to figure out. It was very helpful.
And as areas of town develop, and we have new nodes of commercial development that we want to highlight as a new district, there's flexibility in our signage to do that, and that's why we have such a large array of sign choices to choose from, and so, if we should, you know, have a new area that we want to create a district of, we can do that, so.
It's a good report.
Any other questions?
Lisa, I have one question.
Yes.
As far as Google Earth, will all this information be updated to Google Earth, and how long if it does?
The location of the signs?
Yes. You know, because you've got a lot of major cities, you can Google it on Google Map, and it'd come up and show you exactly...
I have no idea. I don't know anything, I don't know much about Google Earth. I know that I do have a location of each of the signs on Google Earth, if you'd like me to send you that map.
No, no, no.
But as far as updating it universally on the web, I will have to find some technical people to tell me how that happens.
That would be helpful.
That would be a good project for a fifth-grade class.
Can that be Phase Three or something? I don't know. We will take that into consideration, it's good to know.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If any of you are ever interested in attending an Enid First Meeting, you are more than welcome, so.
Item number four can be carried over to the city council meeting at 6:30, and item number six, we will move to the next study session on August the 1st. We adjourn, we'll meet back here at 6:30.
Thank you for joining us for the Enid City Commission Study Session. If you have any questions or comments, visit our website at enid.org.